Bill Kolecki?
Here.
Luizy Michael?
Here.
Danielle Tremble?
Here.
Dave Harshbarger?
Here.
Brian Butcher?
Here.
Mayor Saleen?
Alright, everyone's here if we could stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first we have the approval of minutes. Does anybody have any changes? Do I have a motion? So, approved by consensus? Alright, and then moving on, we have, first up, we have our correspondence. We could have the Morgantown Police Department oath of office today for... Help me out.
Tate.
Tate? Alright. My first name's Mohammed, so I understand. Tate A. Dowd and Brendan H. Dayton, if you would please come to the front and our city clerk would love to swear you in to your oath of office.
You just wanna turn this way, just a little bit.
You just wanna turn this way, just a little bit.
Morgantown Police take an oath to protect the people in their community and to uphold the highest ethical standards. When you see an officer, when you see the badge, see what's behind it. It's a firm commitment to our country and to our community. Police officers have one of the world's most honored but dangerous occupations. When there's an incident or an emergency in the community, police officers are one of the first on the scene. Police officers are guided by the principles of justice and employ the highest ethical standards. It is a great honor today to swear in Morgantown Police Officers Tade A. Dowd and Brendan H. Dayton. Will you please raise your right hand? I state your name.
I, Tade Dowd.
I, Brendan Dayton.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States of America, the State of West Virginia, and the City of Morgantown against all enemies, both foreign and domestic. And I will faithfully and impartially discharge my duties as a police officer for the Morgantown Police Department under the appointment of the department according to the laws of the State of West Virginia and the Charter of the City of Morgantown to the best of my skills and abilities. Confirm by saying I will or I do.
I will. I do. Thank you.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
You wanna go first?
No, go ahead.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Congratulations. Congratulations.
Can we get a photo of her?
Congratulations.
You want me to take your picture?
Thank you.
We can do this. You stand there, it's okay. Hold me up.
We've got a couple of people who can protect you from falling down.
You can come up here and take the picture.
We're not that far. Thank you. Yeah, get up there.
You got one more.
Bring him up.
Yeah.
You got a whole crew, man.
This is a crew-worthy moment.
How do you say that last name? Lefir? Oh, yeah.
That would be good.
Or Laveer. Laveer?
It'd be Laveer.
Laveer, okay. That's how I'm known in the name.
Yeah. It'll go by, even if you mispronounce it, no one will know.
Oh, she's watching. She's watching live. So I just text her and said, "I apologize if I mispronounce it."
Next time we'll set the user list. Just like drop it, keep unrolling. Okay, uh... Yes, next part. Congratulations again to our two newest officers, welcome to the city. We are lucky to have you, proud to have you. Next, we have a Small Business Saturday proclamation with Amy Loomis to accept. Is she here?
Yes, Amy is here.
Oh, like, right behind... Okay, there, oh, hey, come on up.
Are you gonna read it down below?
Yeah, I'll read it down, yeah.
There you go. I use it, there you go. If you can pass that water. Can you do this?
Alright. The City of Morgantown, West Virginia celebrates our local small businesses and the contributions they make to our local economy and community. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are thirty-three point two million small businesses in the United States, small businesses represent ninety-nine point seven. Affirmed with paid employees, small businesses are responsible for sixty-two point seven of net new jobs created since nineteen ninety-five. And small businesses employ forty-six point four percent of the employees in the private sector in the United States. And whereas sixty-eight cents of every dollar spent in a small business in the United States stays in the local community, and every dollar spent at small businesses creates an additional forty-eight cents in local business activity as a result of employees and local businesses purchasing local goods and services. And whereas seventy-two percent of consumers reported that Small Business Saturday twenty-twenty-two made them wanna shop and dine at small, independently-owned retailers and restaurants all year long. And whereas Morgantown supports our local businesses that create jobs, boost our local economy, and preserve our communities. And whereas advocacy groups, as well as public and private organizations across the country, have endorsed the Saturday after Thanksgiving as Small Business Saturday. Now, therefore, I, Joe Abagadum, Deputy Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, hereby proclaim November twenty-fifth, twenty-twenty-three as Small Business Saturday and urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses and merchants on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. I think the camera's like right here.
For the...
For the internet, for the internet and the TV, there you are. Thank you very much. And if you'd like to say anything?
Sure, yes. Hey, it's me, Amy Loomis, oh, there's an echo. From Main Street Morgantown and Morgantown Area Partnership. Morgantown Area Partnership, its membership represents about thirty-eight percent small businesses in the region. And also, Main Street Morgantown oversees the business success of our merchants in the downtown and wharf areas. So I'd like to thank the city for the opportunity to collectively celebrate and champion small and local businesses this holiday season and all year round. The idea of shopping small keeps dollars circulating in your community, as we heard through all the great statistics in the proclamation. But more than dollars, shopping small is also personal. Behind every small business is a family surviving, innovating, and adding value to our community through the care of their products and services. When we shop small, we come to know a familiar face, we hear their stories, and we learn about their pride that they have in their storefronts and their offerings. Small Business Saturday rallies the community to shop small and remember, and reminds us to remember our neighbors during the only celebration event that kicks off the holiday shopping season. This year's event is presented by First Energy Foundation. On Saturday, November twenty-fifth, in downtown Morgantown, we invite the community to shop and dine with your favorite local businesses. You can stop by the Ward Building for our Holiday Hub Shoppers Lounge by Breeze Line, where you can have cookies and hot cocoa, meet the Grinch, enjoy shop small giveaways and contests and activities for kids. There will be music and food trucks in Courthouse Square. You can shop the Holiday Vintage Pop-Up Market in Courthouse Square, as well as the Moonlight Market in the evening. And of course, the best news of all, there will be free parking from the Morgantown Parking Authority all Thanksgiving weekend. At Main Street Morgantown, we believe downtown is the heart of our community, and we work every day towards a safe, welcoming, attractive, and historic district for our merchants and our community. This is the foundation for generations of prosperity and community pride. Our ongoing partnership with the city helps us better the district together. In addition to all of its usual contributions to litter control and beautification, public safety, traffic redirection, beautification, parking permitting, and so much more than I can name, I also want to take a moment to thank the city for their extra care in helping to make this weekend's Small Business Saturday event a success by coordinating the delivery and decoration and lighting of the twenty-foot downtown Christmas tree at Courthouse Square, so it's photo-ready amongst all of the other beautiful trees that are lit at Courthouse Square. And that was also done with the help of County's Public Works as well. I'd also like to thank the city for coordinating with sanitation services and the ambassadors to ensure that the district will look its best for the public this weekend. And I'd like to thank you also for your proclamation this evening. Thank you so much for your support, and I hope to see you downtown, it's gonna be a wonderful time.
Thank you. I look forward to the small businesses, the food trucks, but not the Grinch? Maybe. I hear he has his heart grew ten times that size one day. Alright, next we have the GIS Day proclamation with Marvin Davis. If you wanna come on up? Yes, and bring your little one? Fantastic. Alright, nice shirt. Alright, ready? You want me to read it? Okay, proclamation. Whereas, the City of Morgantown recognizes that an understanding, use, and application of geospatial technology is crucial to operating our infrastructure, sustaining our natural resources, and stimulating economic growth, thus benefiting the welfare of the public through Montegalia County. And whereas geographic information systems, GIS technology, allows us to see and model complex relationships and patterns to respond more intelligently. And whereas, there is a need to promote GIS awareness, education, and technical training to use this rapidly-developing technology to its full potential. And whereas, the City of Morgantown acknowledges those that have chosen GIS as their profession or as part of their discipline to improve the lives of our citizens. And whereas, to recognize and support the efforts of nonprofits who work on activities to improve conservation, human re- services, and various humanitarian efforts to better our world. And whereas, having a day of GIS activities open to students, citizens, and government leaders will help promote STEM education and inspire others to a higher calling to use technology for good. And whereas, the City of Morgantown is committed to utilizing GIS to inform decision-making and better serve its residents, and make useful geographic information open and easily available to the public as a platform for innovation. Now, therefore, I, Joe Abagadum, Deputy Mayor of the City of Morgantown, West Virginia, on behalf of the City Council, do hereby proclaim the fifteenth day of November twenty-three as GIS Day and encourage each individual to join in recognition of the value and application of this technology. There we go. Congratulations. Should I give this to you for...
You wanna take, you wanna take a picture? You gotta hold it.
Perfect. Alright, I jumped in your picture, I hope you know.
No, I had it.
Alright, perfect. That's yours to hold on to, no, that's yours, you get to keep it. And then, would you like to say anything about GIS or Pokemon?
Yeah. I do not know enough about Pokemon to speak intelligently, but my little Liliana here is a big fan of it. And she loves Pokemon Go, which does incorporate a lot of GIS technology. Thank you. Thank you all for supporting GIS. I know I've been here a little while, the last time Lily was here. Accepting a proclamation was twenty-nineteen, and she was young enough for me to actually hold her in my arms still. And it's been a long road, a lot of things have happened. And we have a presentation coming up next that will shed some more light on it, and I'll save most of my speaking for that. But thank you again for continuing to support, I know we're a week after the fact. But GIS Day this year was widely recognized across the state. Several organizations and schools all had events. Hopefully, with City Council or City Hall being finished in a year from now, I hope to host our own event finally in City Council chambers. So looking forward to it. Thank you all.
Thank you. Are you... Are you ready to present?
Yeah. Do you believe I need a mouse?
Marvin, you can turn the screen.
Okay. I say I'm gonna be doing this blind, I'm gonna adjust the screen probably. Christine, do I need to do anything?
Oh, my is him, and you should be good.
Okay. Alright, so... There we go. Alright, so I've owed City Council a presentation for probably two years now, and I do wanna thank you all again for the proclamation and your continuing support for our geospatial technology for the City of Morgantown. I felt it was time to finally shed some light on a lot of things that have been going on. Wanted to go ahead and get into some of our project highlights, and I just wanna list some of these out because there are a lot more that didn't fit on this list. One of the primary ones that City Council has been involved in every even-numbered year is our Award and Boundary Commission review. Since twenty-twenty, we've had a very strong geospatial presence with the Ward and Boundary Commission. And that has been an award-winning project in the past, so hopefully we keep that going again in twenty-twenty-four. Some other things going on that I'll mention on down the line. We did have the election again this year, and we utilized GIS technology with that. And we do have some ongoing intern projects. GIS interns at the city have been a very good resource for us, and I hope we've been a good resource for them. So, our ongoing GIS implementation, the last time probably presented on this, we had Development Services and Engineering and Public Works. As you noticed, that list has grown quite a bit since then, and a lot of it has to do with things that I'll mention in a little bit. The ones with asterisks next to their name, which is most of them, are currently part of our city works implementation that I'll speak on a little bit later. And if you notice, that little whiteboard, I'll even expand it. Can't really read it because we were doing a lot of these meetings, and at some point our hands stopped working. But we were doing workflow diagrams for all of our processes in permitting and planning and zoning, and that was a big contributor to the start of our process over a year ago. And just to give a little blurb on the twenty-twenty-three municipal election, we did incorporate GIS both in the outreach up to the election, the day of, in terms of managing any issues that we had going on, and the reporting of results election night, which we successfully did this time. We were able to report the raw results at the night of, and then we were able to report the more comprehensive results after canvass the following week. And I would not be here without the support of many interns over the years. I wanna give thanks to the three that were my most recent. Picture left to right are Carolyn, Riley, and Lexi. Carolyn was involved on our GIS projects and assisted with most of our mapping support this year that I was unable to do because of stuff I'll talk about later. And Riley and Lexi were a two-headed team of the scanning project that we started. We started digitizing a lot of our engineering diagrams and maps that we had stored away. And thankfully, we got a huge dent in that, and I forgot to write the number down, but I think we were over four thousand documents scanned in the span of about four months. And that is a tiny dent in the total documents we have. So definitely... So definitely want to continue to advocate for interns going forward just for the sake of that project. And then I have to do a quick blurb on the 2023-24 interns. We have two coming up. One's still technically vacant because paperwork's still being processed, but I do want to note James has already started continuing the work on the scanning project and has made a pretty sizable dent in the digitization of it. The next step is going to be mapping some of these documents so we can start having a spatial footprint of our scans going forward, so we'll have a nice catalog of that. And this is something that we are currently undergoing a lot with our City Works. This hopefully will help us on our data updates, but some of the mentions of our streets and roadway assets, our center lines, sidewalks and curb ramps, our street furniture signage, the poles that have signs and/or streetlights on them, curbing and traffic signals, which right now for the most part are our pedestrian flashing signals that have been installed throughout the city. And I should mention, this is what's called a story map, so this is a presentation with a live map in it, so I can do this fun stuff and surf around. This will also be available to the public, so the public is welcome to see the map on their end. So to talk about addressing, it has been mentioned in the past, and I know we've had some questions about addressing going forward. I also have the duties of addressing coordinator for the city, and I do want to mention I did a lot this past year on updating our workflows to be a little more automated and streamlined so that when an address is requested, that I'm able to turn that around a lot faster than it took before, which involved a lot of staring at a screen with a ruler and trying to figure out, okay, is that X number feet away, and that should be this number. It's a lot more automated now and a lot simpler, so that'll hopefully help us also get closer to Next Gen 911, which I'm sure a lot of people have heard, and a lot of process is still going on. But hopefully that's the next step to get us toward that goal, which is going to be very, very cool, I think, once it's implemented. And I have to kind of give a shout-out to MAGIC, the Montegalia-Morgantown Area Geospatial Information Consortium. We've had a pretty good year. The big project once again is going to be the County Aerial Imagery Project, which hopefully will be in February or March of 2024. We've had an ongoing annual imagery project with MAGIC now for two years, so we've been through two cycles of doing a cost share with the county to help facilitate getting this imagery every year. We also have a LiDAR collection that happened in 2021. And yeah, I definitely want to continue to advocate also for MAGIC and the cost-sharing and the collaboration that this allows us, because working together helps bring costs down and helps make things more possible than trying to do them on our own. And also, this is a live website. MAGIC has its own webpage now through Montegalia County. So if you are interested in that, if you go to the Montegalia County website, under, I believe, GIS, it does have the MAGIC webpage under it. And then finally, I can announce it today, two weeks later, but Morgantown GeoHub is now live. So we now have a website dedicated to distributing maps, apps, and data that are being generated from Morgantown's GIS program. And it is still in its infancy. There are still a lot more products to come out of this, but primarily, right now, we are sharing a few things, like our addressing, City Council, this relates more to the election maps and apps that we distributed, Development Services talking about some of our land use cases, our zoning map, and I want to say a few other products as well. And then Urban Landscapes, we have a very comprehensive tree layer that we are actively maintaining through the Urban Landscapes Department. These are all live now, and they are in the City of Morgantown website's banner under Maps and, I believe, Community Resources. So if you look under there, you should see Morgantown GeoHub. It'll take you straight to this website, and I hope you get to look at it and come up with ideas that if you have a data idea or a mapping idea, it could go there. And finally, get into the good stuff. So since 2022, we've been looking at asset and permitting management software, and we long ago decided City Works was the way to go because it had both comprehensive asset and permitting management capabilities on it, but also it's all GIS inside. Under the hood is 100% geospatial technology, and since there's pictures being taken, I can gladly expand the picture so it looks bigger on the screen. But just to give kind of a rundown of what we're looking at right now, the asset management side is fully live. It has been live since September. We are already actively doing active service requests from C Click Fix. So anything that's being submitted through Morgantown 311 for streets and roadway right now are going through this system. So they're actually creating the service request automatically, and we're issuing work orders, assigning work to staff, and letting them assign them, answer them, report their costs, how long it took them to perform the work, and we're getting live feeds on all of that information coming back in, and we can report it back out through maps, through apps, through dashboards. A lot's going on there, and I won't bore everybody with the details tonight, but if you are interested in seeing more of a full demonstration, I'm more than happy to do that at City Hall when the time is right. So the other side of this is the permitting, land, and licensing module, PLL. We are not live on that yet, but we're slowly but surely getting there. Some of the primary things that we're going to have in PLL are going to be all of our construction and building permits, our planning and zoning permits, which are going to be a little bit later, but they are going to release as well. We also just recently added business licensing, so the municipal business license will start to be digitized through City Works' public portal, sorry. And then any special event permitting. I know a lot of that's paper-based right now. We're going through a digital process through this as well, and some of these are already heading toward what's called user acceptance testing, which is the final phase before we get training. So we are not too far off from go-live on some of these applications. I'm really excited to get more into this, but I think I'd rather just show some screen captures of what we're looking at here. So City Works, once again, for right now, we're all operating it internally, but the primary thing is this is going to have a public-facing piece to it, where the public can create an account, start to make an application for a permit, and pay those fees through this system. So it'll all be a digital system going forward, and I'll expand this picture. This is a demonstration site of what we currently have, and you can see that I have a dashboard of any active permits that are going through processing right now. I have a map of those permits, and you can see pretty much a live feed of any information that's relating to cases that I've applied for as a member of the public. And then, of course, I know it's hard to see on the screen here, but there's a new application button, and it goes through a really in-depth user interface that lets you select the exact permit that you need, or in later case, it'll be business licenses as well. And then I believe I have one more picture of what the public will see for a particular case, and not sure what. This would be for a new residence, so if you're building a new house, this is similar to what it looks like. And one of the things that I want to mention is you have the questionnaire, so this matches what's on the paper form now, only it doesn't ask the same number of questions more than one time. And you get to see a live look of where your permit is in the workflow. So if it's at fees paid, well, you got to pay your fees. If it's in review, then review hasn't stopped or hasn't finished yet. So you know exactly where your permit stands, so you don't necessarily have to call the office and try to figure it out. If you have access through the public portal, you'll be able to see in real time where your case stands. And with that, that leads me to where my role in this plays, and that is products coming back out of City Works once we fully go live. What you see on the screen here, I can create, based on any query in our system, I can create a map from it. What you're seeing here right now are closed service requests that came out of C Click Fix. So this map reports back all closed service requests going through C Click Fix, and we can see all that information that was sent from C Click Fix, processed in City Works, and sent back. So thankfully, we'll be able to do this for permitting, business licenses. If you can come up with a question, I'm probably going to be able to answer it through City Works. I've likened it to a fire hose that's going to get ready to be turned on. There's going to be a lot of data to look and process and analyze, and I look forward to what's to come from this in the next year. The anticipation is Q1 2024, everything will be live, and we'll start being able to do all this with the public. But I'm happy, once again, to provide a more in-depth demonstration instead of just pictures. Just let me know. But thank you.
All right.
Thanks, Marvin.
Anybody have any questions?
A couple.
Yes.
Do we have all of our trees currently identified?
I wouldn't say 100%, but our staff have been working on it for the last about two years, and I want to say a good chunk of our public parks have been mapped, at least the trees on there. Anything that's on private property right now, I'm willing to say no, they're not mapped. But anything on a public park, for the most part, has been captured, but it is an ongoing process, and they've kind of tended to do that during the winter months sometimes, at least to map the tree. And if they're not able to identify it, they wait till the leaves come back so they can properly identify the tree. But at the moment, there's over 2,000 points in this layer, and it has been regularly maintained through the work that's being performed on them, if they need pruned or serviced at all. That's typically been the reason for them to map the tree if they don't have it already mapped.
And these are all within city boundaries?
Yes, we're not mapping anything outside the city.
Okay, well, that's admirable. I think it's advantageous. About City Works?
Yes, sir.
You say that's not gone live yet?
On the permitting side, no. We are currently working through pretty much the last workflow, and I'm trying not to sound too techie, but we're trying to finalize some of the processes and how they look in the system, making sure that everything is ready to go for final testing, because once final testing hits, that's it. It's written in stone. So we're working on that right now.
I guess that's where I'm going. When you talk about final testing, do you plan to roll this out to a controlled group that would shake it down and make sure that... I'm assuming that some of this is off-the-shelf part of the package, but also it's been customized to our circumstances?
It is an off-the-shelf product, but it is highly customizable. So it is meant to adapt to any process relating to permitting or business licensing.
Well, in my own experience, and I'm not probably the best techie in the world, working my way through any kind of new software is, at best, problematic. And I know what you're attempting to do is smooth the application and permit process. My question is, I guess, is this going to be shaken down enough and idiot-proof enough that we'll get through it?
That's the hope. That's the hope, that we make it as guided as possible and that it is as user-friendly as possible. That's the goal of it. And through testing, I guess to answer your previous question, yes, we are looking to have a diverse group of people, those that are used to the paper process, don't know anything about permitting at all, are kind of techie and kind of know where to look for issues. We're kind of looking for a diverse group of that. I'm deferring that, though, to the Development Services Director. Mr. Jaeger has already started seeking out users. He wants to look for what we've quoted as frequent flyers, those that apply for permits a lot through the city, that are familiar with the way things are right now, and to let them kind of see from where it is to where we're going as well.
Encouraging. Thank you. I appreciate your efforts.
Yes, if you are interested in participating, I highly encourage people to reach out to me or Emily or anybody at the city.
Very good.
Thank you all.
All right. No other questions? All right. Thank you. I was actually looking over the website. It's really impressive. I was looking at the tree finder that Bill mentioned of the GIS, but I am a little more tech-savvy. Maybe I'm a little tech savvy? I was able to mirror the screen earlier from the computer, so I felt like I was ahead of the curve. Thank you for that presentation. Appreciate it. All right, now we move on to our public hearings, which there is none, and then unfinished business, none. And now on to our public portion, which shall be subject to rules established by council and adopted by resolution. Do we have anyone signed up? No, I don't think so. I can't see past that beam. No list. And then is there anybody wishing to speak right now during our public portion? I guess I'll open it. Anybody wishing to speak? Is anyone moving? No. Okay. Then I'm going to close the public portion. All right. Special committee reports? Nothing. Consent agenda? All right, first up, we have the consideration of approval of a supplemental resolution authorizing issuance of the Morgantown Building Commission lease revenue bonds Series 2023 A Marilla Park Aquatic Complex and the leasing of certain real and personal property from the Morgantown Building Commission, approving the form of a lease agreement, bond purchase agreement, continuing disclosure agreement, preliminary official statement, and other instruments, agreements, and documents, and authorizing the delivery of such preliminary official statement, all relating to the issuance of the Morgantown Building Commission lease revenue bonds Series 2023 A Marilla Park Aquatic Complex. So I guess first I would need a motion before we hear about it?
Move to approve.
Move to approve?
Second.
All right. So now that we have that, now Ryan, would you like to tell us about this?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. The supplemental resolution is council's final step in approving the financing for the construction of the new marilla pool. Council previously adopted a bond authorizing ordinance November of 2022, and as reflected in the title you read, the supplemental resolution approves some of the final documents that our underwriter, Cruz &amp; Associates, will need to market the bonds, and that the city and the building commission will then need to execute and sell those bonds and fund the project. We have with us tonight Tom Ammon of Steptoe &amp; Johnson, Bond Counsel for the City for this project, and Rob Steptoe of Cruz &amp; Associates, the underwriter for the project, who can provide more background detail and address any questions.
Fantastic. Is there anything you all would like to add before I open it up to questions?
I mean, Ryan covered it pretty well from a legal standpoint. You know, you'll recall that the prior bond ordinance that was enacted by the city and the building commission... Of course, the building commission is issuing these bonds and entering into a lease with the city, and then through that lease, the city repays the debt service on the bonds. And so both the building commission and the city enacted ordinances, as the city attorney had indicated last year, and those ordinances covered the possibility of two projects, the ICE Arena project and this project, and provided for bonding capacity for both. So that ordinance is completed and behind both the building commission and the city. And so at this stage, now the supplemental resolution is focusing just on, obviously, the marilla project and narrowing the focus down from bonds of not more than $29 million to bonds of not more than $16 million. And Rob can go into a little more detail about the budget that we have for the project and the bond sizing and some of the numbers. But the supplemental resolution approves the issuance of the bonds by the building commission, and from the city's standpoint, entering into the lease, bond purchase agreement, and then approving the offering document for the bonds, kind of like a book report that tells investors what it is that they're purchasing. It authorizes Cruz &amp; Associates as underwriter to move forward and use that offering document to market and sell the bonds. It authorizes the mayor and the city manager to sign the closing documents, those ones that I mentioned that the city's a party to. But for the most part, again, the building commission as the issuer is taking the lead and is the barter for the project. But for the most part, again, the building commission as the issuer is taking the lead and is the barter for the project. Happy to answer any other questions, but Rob, I think we'll cover some, briefly, some of the numbers aspects of the project.
Okay, so we have a final project budget at this point. The base bid that was low bid accepted was roughly 12.1 million. The construction, the construction environment right now makes it probably prudent to have a conservative project contingency. And so the combination of the 12.1 million low bid accepted plus the 10% project contingency of about 1.2 million, along with the miscellaneous costs of the architect engineering fees, the construction management, materials testing and so forth, is an additional 925,000. So the project, the total project budget is 14,234,000. The contingency, any of those funds that are not utilized can also be transferred to pay principal and interest on the bonds. And so that will be, that's in the documents. And so whatever funds remaining, if any, then can be used to pay down principal and interest. So we, Tom had covered it just a minute ago. We've had a good, we've had a favorable interest rate market over the last three weeks. At the end of October, we were doing some preliminary monitoring of the bond market and rates were around a 5.40 for this type of transaction for a city like Morgantown. Those rates have come down to about a 4.75 right now. And we're hopeful that they'll stay in that range for next week. So 65 basis points, so that's pretty much 65% of 1% in interest cost and 1% in interest cost on 14 or 15 million dollars is a lot of interest savings, believe it or not, over a period of 25 years. So it makes a difference going from where the market was at the end of October to where we are now. So let's keep our fingers crossed that we have this market next Thursday because tomorrow morning, we're going to post the offering document and start the marketing period. So our trading floor, our sales representatives, will spend the next week marketing to every type of investor who has an appetite for these types of bonds, lease revenue bonds, particularly West Virginia investors. We're talking about making a market for retail investors. These would be West Virginia citizens who can take advantage of the tax exemption on the federal and state level. So that's a real drive for them. Also, congratulations, you all, your issuer, your city rating was affirmed at a AA3, which is high-grade investment, a high-grade investment scale. And the bonds will be A2. And so we plan to use that bond rating to also lower the interest rates. That will help secure a lower interest cost overall. And so the combination of a hopefully favorable market next Thursday morning, when we price, along with the city's bond rating and issuer's city rating should bode as favorably as the market will allow and hopefully will create what we call oversubscription, where there's more demand for your bonds than supply. And so when that happens, then we're able to reprice the bonds before we finalize the pricing. Then we'll take the final results and then we'll have a pricing call with the city Thursday, next Thursday, roughly between 1:00 and 2:00 p.m. Then we'll go through the numbers, we'll get a verbal acceptance, and then we'll memorialize that in a written bond purchase agreement. And that's where we've locked in the pricing with the bondholders. And then it's two weeks from there that we'll close, we'll wire funds. You can sign the construction, the rest of the construction contracts and then construction can begin at that point. That's pretty much the overview at this point. Happy to take any questions you all may have.
Anybody have a question?
That's very helpful, thank you.
Brian, you have any questions or thumbs up if you're good? All right. All right, then, thank you very much, that was, well done.
Congratulations on that rating, by the way.
I have generally appreciated this Bow Park project because it came in right around the anticipated budget unlike some of our previous projects. And I just wanted to clarify for some members of the public, I'm not sure, I've been out of town for a week, but while I was out of town, I received two or three different questions about which parts of Marilla Park were being sold to pay for the pool. So I'm not sure if, you know, Ben did something or I don't know, like what kind of reporting someone picked up on. But Marilla Park is not being sold to pay for the pool. The planning commission, two weeks ago, approved a subdivision of that property to transfer to the building commission for the pool project to be built. So the city and the building commission in Bow Park are still in possession of that property. It is not being sold off. That is simply the property where the pool will go. Just wanted to clarify for any member of the public, I'm not sure where confusion came from, whether it was our planning commission meeting or something in the media, but several people reached out to me, which I found odd.
All right. Thank you for clarification. And on that note, if the clerk would please take roll?
Deputy Mayor Abu Ghannam?
Yes.
Bill Kuecky?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Tremble?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Did I gaffe on that one? I'll just keep going, all right. Real quick, before we do, Emily, can you enlarge Brian's face? Not that I don't appreciate looking at our GIS website, there we go, thank you. All right, next we have consideration of approval of a letter of support for Health Rates Harm Reduction Program. Before I have a motion, we have Laura here, if you'd like to come speak on this a little bit. Welcome back.
The only thing that I wanted to update you on is from the last time I was here, we talked about the number of people that we have in our program. And unfortunately, I do not use the database on a regular basis and the people that do were not available when I pulled our numbers. So I want to clarify, in the information that I sent out for you all, that our total number of participants is not 817, it is 520. And that was my mistake, so I went back to clarify that. And I was very quickly shown how I do not understand how the database works. So I'll be in training on that for next year. I don't, if you, do you want me to run down again what the program does or answer questions?
I think
I was just here a couple of weeks ago, so.
Yeah. Do we want to hear a quick brief overview? Can you do like a real brief overview?
Sure.
Just for those watching at home?
In 2015, Mylan Pushkar Health Rates started a harm reduction program called the Light Project, Living in Good Health Together. And the aim of that program is to provide a public health program that assists in decreasing the number of Hep C and HIV cases related to injection drug use and also to provide a safe, nonjudgmental place for people who use drugs to come and talk, to build rapport with them, to offer them every possible service you can think of, including detox treatment, inpatient or outpatient. We, as a companion to that, have our own medication-assisted treatment program for people with substance use disorder. And we also run a recovery community organization in an effort to support people when they're in recovery. So that's basically the overview. We operate several times a week. We have different groups of people that come at different times. We have a specific time just for women because there are unique issues related to drug use for women, including birth control issues as well as childcare issues and domestic violence issues. So we want to make sure that we have a private time for them as well.
All right, thank you for that. Do I have a motion before discussion? Move to approve? Do I have a second?
Second.
Second, all right. And then any questions? Come?
I have a number of questions. I would like to start off by saying I am in favor of harm reduction programs. And I'm sure I will be attacked for having the audacity to ask any kinds of questions, but no matter how supportive you are of an idea, it's clear that not all programs are created equally, so I have some questions. We, I was, I will be completely upfront, I was the one who had asked for your application. I guess maybe I should have used a different word and my apologies, I was out of town at the time, but I guess what I was actually looking for was your report that you're required to file with the state yearly that has things like total number of patrons served, numbers and types of syringes dispensed, collected, disposed, number of syringe stick injuries to nonparticipants, statistics regarding number of individuals entering substance use treatment and total and types of referrals made to substance use treatment and other services.
Okay, and that's a separate, that is not the application.
Right, and that's, I guess, I thought that that had to go in with the application. So when I was asking for the application, I'm like, well, this isn't what I was looking for. So I started doing more digging and I'm like, oh, it's like
It's a separate document that goes in in January.
Okay. So what you had said last time were that you had 820 participants, which now you've said is 520?
Right, I said 817, yes, 520.
Oh yeah, I have about 820. And you said at the time that 156 of those were new participants?
For this year, yes.
And that's still the correct number?
I believe so.
Okay. I guess, moving back and forth between lots of pages here. When you're looking at a 78% return rate on syringes, do you know what the, and this was a question that I asked you last time, did that include syringes that community members had turned in or that your staff had gone out and cleaned up? Because a community cleanup is part of your, do you know what the percentage is for actual program participants returning?
I don't, but I would say that it is, the amount of syringes that we get from the community are minimal compared to the amount that we get from our clients every week.
And do you know what the, I feel like you had given us a number for a month and I thought I had written it down. Do you know what the number of syringes that you give out in any given year?
In any given year? It's, I know it monthly, yeah. I mean, the year number would be on that report that we sent to the state, who should have a copy of it and it should be available, but I'm not sure exactly where that would be available. They, they provide, or they used to anyway, on their website, aggregate numbers for the entire state and that includes our data as well. The average is between 25 and 32,000 a month.
25 to 32,000.
What was that number more?
About 25 to 32.
Per participant?
No, 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 per month, per all participants during that month.
So at a 78%
It's different every
At a 78% return rate, that's indicating that over 6,000 syringes a month are unaccounted for?
Potentially, but also we have new, every time we have a new person, they're not necessarily bringing in syringes. They don't necessarily know they have to do that until they get there.
Okay.
So.
Yeah, I was interested in, and I guess it's in the report, it says that you all have to keep track of the number of referrals that you make of different types and your program manual or your policy manual that you had sent us says you do medical referrals and behavior, health referrals and substance use treatment referrals and social service referrals. So that's all in your report as well? How many referrals are being made?
I don't, I can't remember specifically what the report states. But whatever is on the report, yes, we are reporting that information. So we offer those services every time. It doesn't mean that everybody accepts them.
Right, right.
If that were the case, we'd have everyone in treatment.
No, no, and I'm certainly not meaning to indicate and I've read your 27-page manual, I think, three times now since you sent it last week. I had a lot of time in the car traveling. So there, yeah, several times even your manual talks about like data collection and being available to, you know, the governmental agencies that ask for it. Let me see, I made a note, something about
The state is the only governmental agency that asks for that information, but if you would like, so we send it on a monthly basis and then we also send it on a annual basis. If that's something that you would like to see, that is absolutely something that we could make sure you get a copy of.
Okay. Yeah, I would be interested in seeing the annual or monthly report.
I guess my question would be, what's the concern attached to needing to see those numbers?
Do you keep track of the number of community complaints that you, that the program receives?
Yes, that we receive directly, yes.
Is that in the report?
Is, if there are any, it would be in the report. Now, we don't keep track of complaints that are made on the Greater Morgantown Forum.
Who does?
But a phone call to us that specifically has an issue, yes. And we have amassed several of those from one of our neighbors.
Yeah, I mean, I don't think that it's any kind of secret that that you all have been receiving complaints, we've been receiving complaints, and many of those come from the same person.
They mostly come from the same person, our other neighbors, we have talked with and dealt with the issue. We have done everything that our neighbors have, our neighbors have asked of us, including the city, asking us to put it in a dumpster. And so the situation has improved dramatically and we have not received any complaints with the exception of the request to pick up one syringe three times in the same place, in three days.
And can you explain again, I know we briefly touched on it last time, some of the other supplies that you're giving out? I was just at a national conference and spoke to I was just at, at a national conference and spoke to communities throughout West Virginia that have harm reduction programs and communities throughout the country that have harm reduction programs. And many of them were floored to hear that we were, um, distributing smoking supplies, I guess.
Yes. And there are many different programs across the country that do supply smoking supplies. And the, the thinking behind that and the, um, research behind that is that it is less invasive than having, than performing an injection, um, which comes with its own set of risks. And it's also harder to overdose if you are smoking. If you are smoking fentanyl or heroin, it's harder to inhale enough to, um, set off an overdose. So, it's, it's a prevention technique.
Do you know if there are other harm reduction programs in the state that are supplying those?
Most of the other programs in the state are run by health departments who, um, because they are an arm of the state, have a harder time giving out all the supplies that we give out. Um, and to say that they would like to, yes. Do they? No. Um, I don't know of any specific program, possibly the one in Jefferson County, but I would have to check to be sure about that. Um, but it's not unheard of among harm reduction programs. We attend the, we attended the, um, annual National Harm Reduction Conference in Puerto Rico. And that's where we get a lot of our information about how to best protect people who are using drugs.
Um, I think I probably have a couple more questions, but if anyone else would like to go.
I mean, and our Board of Directors is aware of that and supports that decision. Um, we were running a very comprehensive harm reduction program and we were, um, stopped in our tracks by the new law. But the new law does not prevent us from finding new and better ways to help protect people from overdose and from the harms of, of drug use.
And I will say, I was sent an article by three different people today. Um, apparently, there was recently some kind of conference at WBU where it was said that Morgantown is in a, in an HIV cluster. And I've, some of the people that, that reached out to me today said they were watching the movie tonight. So, I guess I'm saying this for, or watching the, the meeting tonight, not the movie. Uh, that would be more exciting. That, I just want to say for their benefit, I read the article and it was proven that that was not a drug-related outbreak. That was a sexual activity related.
Yes. However, it still makes it concerning because it could very easily get into the IV, uh, drug use. Um, as soon as I, so, I did not know this until I went to the West Virginia Rural Health Conference. And as soon as I did, I had contact with the people I know at, uh, WBU through the Positive Clinic and confirmed that it is in fact not, uh, injection drug use related. But that doesn't, uh, mean that we're out of the woods. It means that harm reduction is more important than, than ever.
Does anybody else have any questions in regards to?
Okay. So, Danielle, pretty much every question she asks is what my thought process has been as well.
Uh-huh.
My concerns are based, I'm concerned about, um, the needles on the ground. And, but, you know, I, I get a lot of people contacting me as well where I run into them, talk to people on the streets and, and their businesses. And, you know, they find needles in their bathrooms and, you know. And my concern is from a safety aspect for the community. And I, I'm, you know, I've been a part of, you know, groups that volunteer to clean up. And I'm just, you know, I'm astounded by how many needles we're finding and just, you know, on the rail trails in certain areas and-
So, we're not hearing that. And that's concerning to me because we're supposed to be the people that know this information and go out and pick them up. So, if there are pockets of syringes on the rail trail, we need someone to tell us that so that we can go out and pick them up. The, the other thing I would say is that if the harm reduction program went away tomorrow, y- we would still have syringes in our community, they would still be in bathrooms. Um, the risk to us is slim to none as far as Hep C and HIV are concerned, although that doesn't make anybody feel better. Um, but to the people that are in, that are actually using those syringes for IV injection, they are at huge risk if they share those syringes. Um, that syringe, the syringes that were left that I picked up, the one syringe, three days in a row, I suspect that person left it there because they were coming back to use that same syringe. And that is, and who knows how many other people could have used that same syringe. And when you understand addiction and the reality that, um, you're going to use no matter what syringe you find on the street, um, that's, that's why having a clean syringe is so important. And it does mean that we're going to find more syringes in our community. But we had syringes in our community prior to harm reduction. It will not make those completely go away. And I, you know, I'm not, um, I, I totally get it. I live in this community. I don't want to be stuck by a, a needle. I don't want to see them when I'm walking down the street or stuck in bushes or, um, but I can't figure out how to provide the, the public health prevention that we need in our community, um, without us having to grapple with syringes in our community. We're going to have to do it anyway.
Yeah, I just, I, you know, I, like I said, I, I have concerns for our first responders, myself included. Um, you know, I just, I'm, I'm concerned about the amount that we see and my, my colleagues and other departments see.
Your, your first responders are seeing?
WBU. I work for WBU, please.
Oh, okay. Are you seeing them on campus?
We see them everywhere.
Okay.
So-
You need to call me.
Yeah, I mean, I'm, but, you know, I'm not just talking, we don't, I'm, clearly, we don't see what, you know, downtown area sees or the rail trails. But sure, we find them.
Mm-hmm.
Quite often. And, you know, I, you know, I have no problem with helping people or trying to get people help or finding resources to help people. But I also want to look, you know, I want to be able to make sure that we're protected, that the downtown businesses are protected or where they're finding needles, just everybody's protected. And, you know, it's not that I'm against this program at all. It's just that I have safety concerns.
I get it.
I think, especially with safety concerns, I think it would be important to recognize what would happen, but these exchange programs have stopped. Have there, there's been outbreaks, as I understand it, just from the news. Because people still use, people still use these drugs no matter what.
Yes.
And to take it away would prevent, would cause the spread of disease. And it's that prevention that your program is offering.
That's what we're aiming for, yes.
Yeah.
It is not our goal to, uh, uh, pollute the streets with-
Right.
-syringes. And I think that we are more and more, I think, getting, I, I'm impressed with the increase in the number that our participants are bringing back. And I think we're continuing, it's a, it's a process. And I think, you know, hopefully, at some point, we'll get to eighty-five percent. Um, not everybody in our community that uses drugs comes to a harm reduction program. So, that's another issue that, um, I, we have some students that we suspect. But, um, I'm guessing that there are a lot of students and other folks that have the means to buy their own syringes that don't come to our program.
Can I ask what steps you take? Um, the state says you have to work towards a one-to-one goal, right? So, what steps do, are you taking to try to increase the return rate?
So, basically, if you don't bring syringes back, then you don't receive syringes. Um, we have turned many people away and, and looking through our database, we have listed, um, no syringes received, no syringes received. Um, there are times when, um, there are certain circumstances in which we might give just ten syringes until the next week. Um, so, either you don't get any or you get a very limited amount. Um, there are people we know that are already infected with illness that we don't want to leave there without some measure of a syringe or two. Um, it makes decision-making very difficult. Um, but I think that we have the power to get to eighty or eighty-five percent. I don't see us ever getting much above ninety. Uh, would be very hard to get a hundred percent of every syringe that's given.
And who is the, who manages your program now? You've, um, changed employees a few times, right?
Morgan, Morgan Wood is our current manager. And we just recently hired a registered nurse who will oversee the program. And we're hiring another harm reduction outreach worker, um, which also may help us make sure that we get more syringes back. And it will, once again, allow us to get out to make regular, uh, syringe pickups. We, uh, the Recovery Center, um, puts groups together to go out on the rail trail. And I think the last time they went out, um, they picked up about thirty syringes. So, they're right down on the rail trail and it makes it real easy for them to get out there.
I appreciated in the past, um, when the manager of the program came and spoke to us. I do think that we need to maintain a relationship. I don't want to have an adversarial relationship with the harm reduction program.
Mm-hmm.
I think that the more we communicate and keep in touch with each other, absolutely the better because, I mean, for, we get the complaints as much as you all get the complaints. And we need the information to be able to, to talk to people and combat, you know, the stigma and also the misunderstandings that, that sometimes happen. So, I would like to, I would like to see the, the, um, report that is filed with the state. And I would like to have, um, maybe, I mean, I was reading your, your policy and it says that, you know, government, uh, records related to the LIGHT project will be made available to governmental agencies. And LIGHT will comply with reasonable requests to observe service delivery and interview participants with proper consent. I'm not interested in interviewing participants per se, but I would like to come in and meet the staff and talk to them in, in-
Absolutely.
... a more relationship because it's, if, if it's going to continue, we're, we're all going to have to be in it together.
Yes. And yes, uh, coming in is absolutely appropriate. Coming to one of the nights that we're open is also totally appropriate. Um, and I know that when some of the complaints were coming into the city, I was being copied on them and I was answering them and sending it out to everyone so that everyone knew that, um, we have invited people who are upset about the program to come visit us. They continue to, um, refuse to do that. But I personally think the more that people come and see what we're doing, even if it's not a night when, when participants are there, just coming in to see the process and how we do what we do, I think the be, the better. It's, it's not a mystery, uh, it's certainly not a secret. And, um, we would be more than happy to do that.
And one final question and then I'm done.
Okay.
Um, at various times when you and I have talked or been in the same meeting, um, you had said that you were looking for a new home for the LIGHT program. Um, is that still being considered? If you moved to Scott Avenue, would you be moving it there? What, what is the plan for the future?
So, we did have a plan to move to a new facility, but we lost our, um, coordinator that was here last year. And the new person that took over was very new in that role and it was not appropriate at that time for us to just completely send them out to run a program on their own. So, um, I think we have worked out that the main problem is that it takes up a huge amount of space in our clinic. In the new clinic, we have developed a space that will work well for them. It has a closet contained in it and a, an office. And it's right as people come in the door. So, they will be able to come in, get what they need and do whatever they're going to do and leave. So, we intend to move it to Scott Avenue with us. Um, and the only other option would be to do some kind of mobile, um, program, which we could potentially do with the van coming down into town at a certain time at a certain place. And, um, but we wouldn't be doing that without letting you know and you would have to approve that.
Thank you for answering my many, many questions.
Anytime, Danielle. You could have come over and asked me these a long time ago.
I've been out of town. I've been out of town.
And I guess for the public's information, you all do have open houses or have had open houses in the past, right?
Um, we ha, we're pretty much open. I mean, we're a community clinic. You can come in at any time. Um, we don't necessarily have open houses when we have participants there because the goal is anonymity for the most part, even though they have to show us their ID. Um, but absolutely, we would be more than happy to do a tour and specifically focus on the harm reduction program and/or the other supports that we have that go along with it, with, um, the medication assisted treatment and, um-
And, and then-
And that you're more than welcome to come to the Recovery Center. It's wide open.
I, I do have one last question. Uh, I say me, um, but this was a very thoughtful question I can't take full credit for.
Okay.
Uh, it's from the mayor. Um, asking for the public's information, what do you all give to participants to help bring back the syringes in?
We give them, uh, Sharps containers. They are red Sharps containers. They cannot be put in the regular garbage. They have to be brought back to us. There is a safe and legal way for people to get rid of syringes that the state provides and some of our people did that in the past. Uh, but they're, they're being encouraged to bring it back directly to us in a Sharps container. Um, we have measured how many syringes go into a Sharps container and we have lines on those Sharps containers because they're various sizes. And that tells us when somebody brings it back, how many roughly are in there. Um, it is impossible or not advisable to open a syringe container and count. Uh, so, that's how we've, we've figured out how to do this so that our staff are not at risk. To our knowledge, we have not had a needle stick, well, we know we haven't had a needle stick onsite. Um, and I have not heard of anyone having a needle stick. They would be reported to the, um, Health Department and, and/or the emergency room. So, I'm not aware of anyone having a needle stick from a community syringe.
Well, thank you for answering all those questions.
Sure.
It is-
Anytime.
It's an important job to prevent these kind of outbreaks and stuff like that. And hopefully, eventually, help with drug addiction.
Sure.
So, since the program started, I believe, what, two thousand seventeen?
Mm-hmm.
When it was passed?
Fifteen, two thousand fifteen, we started.
Are you actually seeing a decrease in HIV cases since the program started to now? Or hepatitis?
What we haven't seen is an increase in HIV. So, Morgantown has always had a low number of HIV cases, about three, uh, in a given year. Um, this last year, we have ten. They are not related to IV drug use. In the last few years that we have, um, had, that we have data, there has been no increase in HIV. Hep C, most of our folks are already Hep C positive when they come to the harm reduction program. So, our goal right now is to get them treated. We have, um, a treatment program that's available on Fridays during one of our- We have a treatment program that's available on Fridays during one of our harm reduction programs. And we're getting people treated, and they no longer are positive for Hep C, so. It's a complicated, complex issue.
Well, thank you again for coming back.
Sure, no problem.
Appreciate that very much.
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Brian's ready to.
Brian, do you have questions?
He's by way of the internet.
Hey, Laura, I, I just have one question for you. It's, as far as testing for Hep C and maybe other health screening, I know some clinics, and I don't know if, you know, West Virginia state law allows this or what, but I know some clinics have an opt-out of testing for Hep C. Like, do you guys just test for Hep C and other, well, other diseases as requested? Or is that done as people enter the program?
So it, it works in two different ways. If the person becomes a patient at health rate, and many folks do, then it's an opt-out for both HIV and Hep C. So if we run blood work on you, we test for everything. If you are part of the harm reduction program, it's a low barrier program. So you are offered testing at every visit, but it's up to you to decide. Until recently, most people have not been concerned about HIV. They don't realize they need to be concerned, so that's been a whole educational process. But Hep C is a lot different, and we do get a lot of folks who wanna test for Hep C. And a lot of them already know they're positive.
Thank you. And Joe, are we moving to discussion now, or? I don't wanna like belabor everybody on Zoom, but I just wanted to make a couple comments.
I was gonna make sure we didn't have any more questions for.
Yeah, yeah.
All right, move to this, go ahead now, open the floor. Thank you. All right, discussion.
Okay, yeah, just in terms of.
Wait, wait, we, hold on, we didn't have a motion. Brian, wait, we didn't have a motion yet.
Oh, okay.
Did we? I thought that was for the supplemental.
No.
All right, I lie, I guess we did.
Okay. Just on the topic of when we were talking about HIV outbreaks and if we prevented them, things like that, or if they had gone up. Just, you know, for everybody's certification, in 2018, when Charleston put in major restrictions on their harm reduction program and closed down several of them other than what their, their health rate, and Charleston had, they had one of the most severe HIV outbreaks directly afterwards in the entire country. They had a diagnosis of HIV that was on par with the level of New York City in Charleston, West Virginia. So when we, and, and the CDC afterwards came through with recommendations about reestablishing wide-reaching and low-barrier harm reduction programs after that outbreak. Obviously, those recommendations weren't followed, but we saw that kind of like cluster and that crisis happen in Charleston when that was shut down. So, you know, there is scientific outcomes that, that do follow after the shutting down of these programs. I just wanted to make sure that was part of this discussion, but now my dog's barking, so.
I appreciate that, Brian. I remember that in the news, but I could not pinpoint the city. I was Googling it.
I was also the person who asked Ryan to look into what other restrictions other municipalities in West Virginia had put into their harm reduction approvals. And currently, it's just that Charleston requires a ninety percent return rate. At one point, Huntington was requiring a proof of Campbell County residency, and Ryan said they were no longer doing that. So I asked the mayor of Huntington about that this week, and he said, oh, yeah, we tried that, and we still got a spike in our county, just, just making people show a proof of county residence, so.
So it's effective.
Seems counterintuitive, but.
All right, since we apparently did have a motion, okay. On that note, City Clerk would.
Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
I'm a no right now.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Am I supposed to say passes six one? Oh, passes six one? All right. I wasn't sure. Okay, next we have consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance authorizing the purchase of property in the Fifth Ward District, Morgantown, Montagnally County, from the Montagnally County Development Authority. Before I have a motion, Ryan, do you wanna speak on this, and then we'll ask questions and discuss?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. This ordinance would authorize the city to purchase two parcels of real estate from the Montagnally County Development Authority. These are currently two unoccupied houses adjacent Locust Avenue in the Richwood area. The city proposes to purchase those properties with tax increment financing funds in the Willie Spruce-Brockway District for permitted project purposes. So this does not involve an expenditure of any city general funds. It involves use of existing increment funds to further the project plan in that Tiff District. However, because it's a property purchase, it requires approval by city council ordinance. So this ordinance is presented to you for first, first reading. The proposed purchase price is the appraised value as assigned by the county assessor's office. And we request that you would pass this on first reading and move forward.
I'm sorry. All right, there we go. First motion?
Second.
Okay. Question? Discussion? Discussion? Yes.
Thank you. Is this property already? Is the contract in place with the property owners for this price?
Yes, Council.
So the price has been determined, contracts are in place. All we need to do is just approve this to move it forward?
That's correct.
Thank you.
And could you describe the, the use of the property? What it's needed for?
The plan is to facilitate road improvements. The, the corner where Richwood Avenue approaches Locust Avenue is a very difficult angle, and these properties are near that intersection. And so the city plans to use those for roadway widening or realignment consistent with redevelopment plans in the area.
Thank you.
Anybody else? All right. Yep, please, thank you.
Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Passes seven zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease with West Virginia Department of Transportation Divisions of Highways. Again, I'll look to you, Ryan, for some background.
Mayor, this will renew an existing lease between the Department of Transportation Division of Highways and the city, which leases a portion of state road property that forms the entry to Dorsey's Knob Park and contains most of the access road leading back out of the park. Lease is in place and is expiring at the end of the year, and so requires renewal, and we would ask that the city approve. This is, the lease is at no cost to the city. It's for a five-year term. These are common arrangements by DOH when they allow users to lease property that's technically within their roadway system but not used for a road.
All right.
Move to.
I'll second the.
Discussion? Anybody? Nowhere? No, all right. City Clerk?
Yes, Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
All right, passes seven zero. Next, we have a consideration of approval of a first reading of an ordinance authorizing a lease agreement with Avis Budget Car Rental LLC at the Morgantown Municipal Airport. Sorry, Ryan, you're out. City Manager Kim, you're in.
This item, thank you, Deputy Mayor. This item has been discussed prior, at prior council meetings, and addresses a, a request to lease property by Avis Budget Car Rental LLC. The proposal is that we enter into a lease agreement with, with Avis Budget Group for a term of, beginning December first, for a term of three years with one, two-year renewal option at the end of year three. Basically, it allows for the rental of two hundred and twenty-four square feet for car rentals, a car rental counter as well as an office space. And that will generate a revenue of, at thirty-five dollars a square foot, which will generate an annual revenue of seven thousand eight hundred and forty dollars. And then it also calls for the leasing of twenty-five cars, auto spaces, spaces out front for parking at ten dollars a, a space per month, or a total of three thousand dollars per year. In addition to those, those revenues, Avis has agreed to ten percent concession fee on gross revenue. It's, it's staff's recommendation that it be approved and that it meets the, the demands of the, the airport at the current time.
Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second. Discussion? Once, all right.
I have a question.
I didn't know if you were waving. I thought you were waving. I was like, all right, you're waving your son.
But, sorry, but is Enterprise already there, Kim?
No, they, they used to be, and they, I guess they found that the grass was not green around the other side of the fence and came back to this side of the fence, and they're doing, and, and it, it certainly helps with our, our, our air travel customers at the airport. So we're, we're in full agreement with that.
Okay, thanks, Kim.
All right, good now, Brian? Okay. All right, City Clerk?
Yes. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Next, we have a consideration of approval to purchase an ETC lighting system for the Metropolitan Theater. Time to turn the floor over to Assistant City Manager, Ms. Mazarelli.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. So this is a fairly detailed and, and technical memo included in your council packet, but essentially, this is requesting city council to approve essentially a sole source, a sole source purchase for the replacement of the theatrical lighting within the Met Theater. We've had some ongoing maintenance issues, and that system is about twenty years old. And in the technology world, that's ancient. And so we've been having a lot of trouble finding replacement parts and finding people that can service that. So this is in our capital improvement plan, and it has money available in the budget. We've been working with people in professional theater lighting. I guess it's significantly different just because you have to tie in the lighting to the fire alarm systems and everything else. So everything has to get purchased as a package, so. So this would be going forward, if approved by council, this would be moving forward with the purchase of that lighting as a package, just over a hundred thousand dollars. And then whenever it actually got time to come and install those lights, that work would be bid out for a company that is knowledgeable and knows how to actually install the lights.
Thank you.
I look forward to my stage. I have a motion from the mayor.
I'll second.
All right. Discussion?
All right, how confident are we in the, the bid process here, the cost of this particular?
They've been taking about the last nine months, looking into the different options as far as actual lighting. So I would say as far as the actual light purchases themselves, and, and that is fairly confident in those prices and in line with what we were expecting and what was in the budget. When we go to bid it out, that obviously may add a cost.
Very good. Actually, this makes this a more desirable venue. And that's, anything we can do to increase the use and traffic in that area is, is well worth the investment.
Is this inside lighting?
This is all the inside lighting, so whenever you go to shows, then there's all the different color lights that move all around and do the crazy things. That is, that's what these lights are, so they're the theatrical lighting.
For my one-man show?
For your one-man show, yes. You can have all the lights in the world if you rent them out.
And we're doing the sole cer, sole source purchase because it's specialty, essentially?
It is, it is specialty equipment. This isn't like going to, you know, any lighting supplies. You can't, you know, Google these online, and because it's kind of designed as a system, very similar to almost like a playground. So, you know, lots of people make playgrounds, but you can't, you kinda have to buy it as a package. You kinda figure out and design it together. It's very similar whenever you're doing these lighting systems, just because of how they're integrated. So they, they kind of almost design and build it for your venue, how far back it's gonna go, how many lights you can fit, how big your stage is.
Anyone else have a question? Brian? Okay. The City Clerk, please take role.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Boganum?
Yes.
Bill Kueckie?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Passes seven zero. Next, we have consideration of approval of first reading of an ordinance abandoning a portion of East Brockway Avenue. And we turn it over to our City Attorney, Simon.
Last one for me tonight.
So you think?
That is my sincere hope. This is a proposed ordinance that will actually relocate a portion of East Brockway Avenue as it comes into Upper Marilla Park to facilitate construction of the new Marilla Pool. It'll do that by annuling a portion of the existing roadway and then dedicating new roadway on property the city already owns. Both of those have been plotted by our project engineer, Thrasher, and are shown in the exhibits to your ordinance. Relocating the roadway will allow the pool to be built with the parking directly beside the pool so that patrons do not have to park and then travel across the road to, to get into the aquatic complex. So we request that council pass this on first reading and move the ordinance forward.
Move to approve?
Very good.
Was, was that a second, Bill?
I thought the mayor had seconded, but all right, I'll second.
Okay. All right. Discussion? Let's go to Brian first. Brian, all right, he thumbed up. Anyone else?
Ryan, with the, the bid that we received, it's my understanding that the moving of the road is included in that. the road is included in that, in that base bid?
That's my understanding as well. This was, like I said, Thrasher prepared our limits of disturbance and plot of survey for the subdivision as well as for these road relocations. So, I think those, those items were part of the scope of work issued to bidders and will be funded by the project proceeds.
Thank you.
I think also when you take little kids to the pool, they're excited, you don't want them running across the street to get to what will be a fantastic new aquatic center.
Mom gets out of the car with the floaties and the towels and the cooler and trying to get across the street.
Yeah. All right, on that note, city clerk?
Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. Nearing the end. Next, we have consideration of approval of a resolution authorizing the creation of the opioid settlement fund. I turn this one over to city manager, Hawes.
Thank you Deputy Mayor.
Just to give some background on this, we've all heard the discussions about the settlements for opioid, for the whole opioid crisis that's occurred in West Virginia. A settlement was reached and a foundation by the name of West Virginia First Foundation was created to help manage and distribute those funds as they come in. The foundation had its first meeting on Monday, November 6th. This is very early in the process and there's still a lot of information still needs to come and needs to be processed through the foundation. It's estimated that approximately $1 billion will be received by the state of West Virginia for the opioid lawsuits. Some of the settlements may, may be received in, as late as 2036. An initial $300 million has been received by the state, of which 70, 24% or $73 million will be distributed to municipalities and counties most hard hit by, by the crisis. The state obviously keeps the rest of that. The first distributions are expected to be made before the end of this year. We have not seen any amounts or been advised of any amounts that are coming to the city of Morgantown yet. The settlement funds are very specific in how they can be used. They must be used to abate the opioid crisis. So, what this resolution does, it allows for the creation, well, let me, let me just say the week, the finance department earlier this, last week, received a guidance from the West Virginia Auditor, State Auditor's Office, which requires the creation of a new fund. It's kind of like an enterprise fund, you receive the dollars and then it's expended out of that fund. Municipalities are required to utilize the chart of accounts established by the State Auditor's Office. So, it, the first ask is that a, a fund be, be, be created called the West Virginia Municipal Uniform Chart of Accounts Fund Number 026. In addition, a new and interest-bearing checking account will be opened with United Bank for the deposit and expenditure of the settlement dollars. Both the creation of the opioid settlement fund and the bank account must be, according to the State Auditor's Office, must be approved by the council in public meeting, and that's what we're here for. That's all I have, thank you.
I have a motion, and then maybe a second?
I'll second.
All right.
I do have a question. You're advocating here for the, the creation of a fund, are you also including some sort of advisory board to?
That's not what this motion's, we're complying with the State Auditor's Office on this one.
And specifically, all they're asking for is the idea of establishing the fund?
Yes. And, and creating the bank account that allows for the deposit and distribution of those funds.
And not?
That's all, all they're asking for at this point.
At this point, they're not giving us any guidance on how the funds will be distributed. Very good, thank you.
Somebody just wants to make the pity bank. Any other, Brian?
Yeah, Ryan, it was, from what I had seen, there was like a certain percentage allocated, but we still don't have an idea of what that, what that money actually looks like at this point.
That's correct.
That's, that's right, there's a, there's a percentage.
Allocation in the West Virginia First memorandum of understanding that Morgantown and I think all counties and most municipalities in the state signed on to, but I don't think we have information about all settlement funds that are covered by that or when those will be directly distributed. Probably if the auditor's office is now directing municipalities to establish these accounts so they can track the receipt and expenditure of the funds, you could expect those to come through relatively soon.
And was there, during those, wasn't there initial guidance on the spending of this, of these monies by municipalities or am I?
Yes, you're correct. The, the settlement agreements specify the permissible purposes for expenditure of the funds and they cover all manner of assistance to responding to the opioid crisis. And so, there's a, there's a long list in that MOU of permissible expenditures which the city can use its direct funds in this account on as well as the foundation will expend its funds for.
Just curious, because just kind of, sort of following up on what Bill had to say about, I don't know if you were actually saying this, Bill, I might be putting words in your mouth, but about possibly having an advisory committee to determine how we'd spend these funds. Is there, do, I don't want to like force you to speculate or anything like that, do you think you have like an idea of what the range of the amount of money that we might be getting here is?
I do not often, and I'd be happy to follow up and get back to you on that.
Okay, thank you.
Hmm, you have a question?
No.
Oh.
Did you need a motion or something?
No, I see you want to say any questions for discussion. Okay. Glad we take role, please.
Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Passes seven zero. And next, we have consideration of approval of an award for council strategic planning consultant, and I'm going to go back to our city manager, Hawes.
Actually, I'll turn the time over to Deputy City Manager, she, she has, she sat on the committee too.
I apologize.
Thank you, that's my fault, yes.
So, included in your packet was a memo recommending from the selection committee, award of a strategic planning contract to RFTLIS in the amount of $58,000. The last time we did a strategic planning process was about three and a half years ago, it was mid 2020. It's, it's, was really interesting looking back at how much has changed since, you know, mid 2020. We are, we have done strategic plans on and off throughout the past, and we have, and we filed an updated interim report on what we were able to accomplish on the 2020 strategic report, and we have actually been going through to do kind of a final update on what we were able to accomplish, and it's amazing in just a short amount of time how much we really have been able to do. So, we're hoping to be able to provide that updated report both to council and to the public on everything since that time that we were able to do. Knowing, having that focus, we are looking to, I guess, kind of up that, update that strategic plan, kind of knowing that where we're at now, and felt that RFTLIS, we got nine responses from the RFP, so that was a really great response, varied very much in, you know, firms' approaches and in price tags to go along with that. But the selection committee felt that, looking at a cost and what the firms were able to provide, that RFTLIS would, would provide the, the city council and the city organization and the community the best path forward with a strategic plan.
Have a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
And discussion? Brian? He's good.
Can I ask who was on the selection committee?
The selection committee consisted of myself, the mayor, and Councilor Kueke.
Then the clerk will please take.
Yes. Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
No.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Yes.
Passes six to one. And last, we have considerations of approval of to purchase a skid steer from Sourcewell, and back to you.
Yes, so, again, included in your packet is a memo from our Director of Engineering and Public Works. This would be using Sourcewell, which is the state contract, to purchase a piece of equipment, specifically a skid steer. Off of here, all the details are included on there, and as well as two pieces of kind of attachments for that, one being a broom that would help clear light snow and debris and stuff off roadway, as well as a grapple bucket, which is essentially a bucket that has a hook on top, so it allows you to grab. We are, would be trading in our existing skid steer, which is 2008. It's a 15-year-old piece of equipment. We do have existing attachments for that one that we would be able to use both on this new one as well, so we will be able to continue to use those attachments. But anytime you purchase off the state contract, it comes through city council to approve. And this would be in the amount of $66,208.
What was that?
I'll move to approve.
Second. And discussion?
I do have a question, you say we're trading in the old?
Correct.
So, there was some value in trade?
Our current trade-in, which was a 2008, which again is 15 years old, we, is able to provide $8,000 worth of trade-in. So, that was some of the thought process in looking to trade in now while it still had some value to it.
Certainly, I understand that, and it's admirable, I'm just curious to know if it would be more advantageous to have two. I mean, at very least, you know, the next touch of truck, it would be well positioned.
We do have a lot of, I mean, a lot of equipment that we use. This was the recommendation of the Engineering and Public Works Department to, to look at that from a trade-in. We do have our own fleet maintenance that both manages our vehicles and our equipment. We're also trying to be cognizant of what equipment we buy, knowing that if and when the green bag road, roadway and potential roundabout projects move forward, that we will be losing a sizable portion of our city maintenance garage, which is where we store our equipment at.
Very good, thank you.
It says it's within our budget, and I was just trying to find where, like what part of the budget this will come out of.
So, for streets and right of ways, this comes out of the MSF equipment budget, so the municipal service fee equipment for streets or right of ways budget. That's where most of their commitment gets paid from.
Brian?
I have one question, can, my six-year-old myself drive the skid steer.
I don't know if you're covered under our insurance right now, but if you want to get your CDL, we'll work on it.
Okay, we'll have to look at it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
For $9,000, you can own an older skid steer. Anybody else? All right. The clerk will take.
Yes, Deputy Mayor Buganam?
Yes.
Bill Kueke?
Yes.
Wheezy Michael?
Yes.
Danielle Trumbull?
Yes.
Dave Harshbarger?
Yes.
Brian Butcher?
Yes.
Mayor Celine?
Passes seven zero. All right, and now on to the city managers' report.
Thank you Deputy Mayor, I, you, many of you have been intimately involved in the CDBG program, grant program over the years, and we certainly, Morgantown has received its share of CDBG grants to provide funding for various projects. I, I'm still not satisfied with the breakdown, the calculations and the amount that we get in relation to other cities, we're still working on that, but the fact of the matter is that we continue to draw down CDBG funds for various projects. Our, our grant writer, Robin Hess, along with, who's, who's in charge of the CDBG grant program, along with our CDBG consultants, have begun the process of developing the city's five-year consolidated plan for fiscal years 24 through 28, and along with an annual action plan for 2024, and also updating the city's analysis of the impediments to fair housing choices. Certainly, we are soliciting the views and comments of individuals and organizations concerning housing, community, and economic development and fair housing needs in Morgantown. You all should have one of these next to you. This is a survey that's been sent out to residents and will continue to be sent out. To date, today, as of today, we had 95, we received 95 of these surveys back, which is a great, great number considering how, how long they've been out. And, and on the 30th of November, a community meeting, either in person or Zoom, will be held in the conference room at 430 Screw Street. All, all the interested residents are encouraged to attend the meeting, hearing either in person or virtually, and they will be given the opportunity to present oral and written testimony concerning the needs of city of Morgantown and the use of CDBG funds for the next five years. Written or oral comments can be directed directly to Robin at 430 Screw Street or by phone. Her phone number is 304-284-7479, or by email to rhes at morgantownwv.com. We're, we're hoping that those plans come back to city council for approval early in May of '24. That's all I, oh, one other item. Had a good meeting with our airline that provides airline services out of our airport the other day with, with our airport director. It looks as though we will be able to, we're going to hit the same number of implantments as we did last year. We were shooting for 10,000 implantments, that's the, that's the magical number where we can receive some significant additional funds from FAA. We're not going to reach that this year. We've had, Southern has had some major problems getting parts for its airplanes. Some of those parts came out of, came out of Ukraine, and, and just, we all know what the supply chain is across the, across the world. Having real problems, they had, he did say that they have purchased a number of new planes to deal with that. The other problem that they're having, that's leading to some cancellations that we're not happy with, and he certainly isn't, is that we're really having problems with pilots' shortages. The FAA and- shortages. The FAA increased its number of hours of training required to the point where it just makes it impossible for these small regional airlines to compete. And then you have these large airlines that are also desperate, that are willing to give huge, I mean, we're talking gigantic bonuses to siphon off local pilots. So that's that's my report in terms of implantments and the use of the airport. We keep struggling through the supply and demand and the and and all of those issues that affect it. That's all I have. Thank you, Deputy Mayor.
All right, thank you. And now a report from the city clerk.
Yes, thank you, Deputy Mayor. On October 4th, the Police Civil Service Commission held their promotional exam for the ranks of Sergeant and First Sergeant. After the written exam and medical exams, I am pleased to share that Rob Balderson was promoted to First Sergeant, and Rob Mirnoff and Joe Patterson were promoted to Sergeant. And so big congratulations to those officers as they move forward in their career. On December 13th, the Police Civil Service Commission will hold their Police Captain promotional exam. So shortly after the exam, I look forward to sharing who made that promotion to captain. On October 28th, the Police Civil Service Commission held their entry-level police officer exam. Thirty-five individuals applied, 16 showed up and took the written exam. Out of the 16, seven passed the written exam and five passed the agility. The commission held their interviews on the same day after the agility exam, and that helped to kind of fast-track that process that we've been looking to do to get our officers on on board a little quicker. So thanks to the commission for doing that. And then they will meet again on December 6th to certify names. And interviews have been allotted with our city administration and HR for December 11th. So hopefully we'll get some new ones on board a little quicker than we typically do.
When is the next test again? When will we?
It's in March. The commission hasn't set the date.
No chance to get it any sooner?
It's possible. I can ask the commission.
Could you ask maybe? Let's try to move it up a little.
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, thanks.
So thanks for asking that, Councilor Michael. Applications are being accepted on ongoing basis, so we're still taking applications for information on the next exam. And to apply, folks just need to go to our website at MorgantownWV.gov, hover over Departments, click on the Police Department, PD page will pop up, and then click on Apply Now, and you can apply online through that process, and it'll come directly to the clerk's office. So when we meet again on December 6th with the commission, I can recommend moving that entry-level exam up a little quicker than March and let you know. And then that'll be published out with, it's already on our website that we're accepting applications, but there's no date. I think it just says March, so.
Okay, great.
That concludes my report.
Thank you. And city attorney report?
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Appreciate council moving through all the Numerala Pool construction financing items this evening. We'll work with bond counsel and our underwriter to get those through to our closing, tentatively scheduled for December 15th. And the project engineer has informed the the low bidder of an intent to award, so hopefully that project will get started soon. Other than that, I don't think I have anything more specific to report this evening. Thank you.
All right. And council report. Should we start in the in the matrix with Councilor Butcher over there?
You can do that, that's fine.
All right.
So on Monday, we held a stakeholder meeting at Hazel's House of Hope, kind of chaired by Bartlett House, to have all the kind of involved decision-makers in the warming shelter effort, come together and hammer out kind of the tentative agreements that we have, and also spread information out there. I was in attendance, as well as Councilwoman Tremble, and close to every service provider up there on the hill. I think we were missing two, Danielle, out of out of everybody that was up there. There will be several volunteer opportunities. There are current, Bartlett is currently hiring to have workers work the warming shelter out out there at Hazel's House of Hope. I don't want to get too much into the weeds of how this would operate, since those agreements are still being hammered out, and and things could change, and I don't want people to, you know, hear one thing and get confused. So I I think we'll have more to talk about as far as that goes soon. I I think it was a quite a productive meeting and agenda, and it was good to to hear from everybody out there. It sounds like some, I mean, you know, it was some real, like, good collaboration that was going on up there. I believe on their website, Carrie has like several different resources that you can see on their Facebook and website. They have several different resources as far as like signing up to volunteer. And so like donations, volunteer opportunities, and job opportunities are forthcoming. And that effort is also forthcoming, so know that it it is ongoing at this time. I also wanted to just make people aware that on Sunday, December 10th, from 4:00 to 6:00 p.m. at the MAC, there will be the Human Rights Day Award Ceremony. There will be free parking and free food. I don't know, I I guess we'll just leave the winners. I won't steal that thunder from the HRC, but some pretty deserving winners that they decided on last time. And I believe they both accepted at this time. There was also on Monday, there was a gathering of the individuals, the Courthouse Square for Trans Day of Remembrance. It's a day set aside to mark, you know, harm and and death that's occurred in the trans community, inflicted upon the trans community because of their identity. I was able to attend very briefly. I had to drop off pizzas for the event and then go right back home. But just wanted to mark that day and that event. And I believe that's it for me. And thank you very much for letting me attend. And for the city clerk to 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 make sure I could be here tonight, I appreciate you, Christine. I had to watch my kid tonight, so that's why I'm not not here in person. But again, thank you for allowing me to attend virtually.
Yeah. Councilor Harshbarger?
I really enjoyed the National Christmas tree coming through town and being at the courthouse. I thought the city did a great job of helping to host that. And phenomenal turnout, just a phenomenal turnout. That was really nice. I guess really the only other thing I'll mention is that next week at this time, we'll have some different presentations to the committee of the whole. One of them will be from Morgantown Utility Board. And if there are any particular projects you would like me to prep, the general manager on providing some info, we've gone over a list, but if there's something in particular you'd like me to make sure is is included, just just let me know. And happy Thanksgiving.
You.
Seems like forever since we've been here, I've been traveling, and our last meeting was canceled, so I don't even know what I've done since then, aside from the fact that I attended the National League of Cities Conference in Atlanta. I did multiple mobile workshops, and that was pretty much all I saw of Atlanta, because the rest of my time were spent in sessions and meetings. I did a lot of food insecurity, affordable housing, homelessness response. I had several meetings with federal co-chair Gail Manchin of the Appalachian Regional Commission. A lot of networking, a lot of, a lot of good things to bring back. I've been trying to update on that on my social media pages. I'm a little behind, but what's new? I came back to many, many things waiting on me, including as Councilor Butcher spoke about, the warming shelter preparations. Apparently, we should be calling it an emergency shelter, because that helps us get additional funding from other governmental agencies. We continue those conversations. We did go to the stakeholder meeting on Monday. I had many phone calls, meetings, emails while I was gone, and we continue to try to work out the final facilities use agreement. Hope Hill Sobering Center has agreed to allow Bartlett House to utilize our space. So we are, we are ceasing sobering center operations as of November 30th, and we will pivot at that point to allowing Bartlett to utilize the spaces as emergency shelter. We are still waiting on the Board of Morgantown Community Resources to finalize their approval of the of the use agreement, but we're expecting that. I don't know, I have like four emails right now since I've been in this meeting. So we're expecting that hopefully in the next few days here. We do have a board meeting next Tuesday before Committee of the Whole, so hopefully, at least by that time, we will have a definitive plan. I did want to touch on the warming shelter very briefly, because that was, the original plan that was brought to us was set to be in the fifth ward, in my ward. And we had a meeting at the church where it was proposed, and I feel that that got out of hand. I want to remind everyone that it is possible to question an idea and question logistics without attacking people. I thought that some of the the things that were spread through the neighborhood, spread around on social media, were a bit out of line. As someone who myself is frequently a victim of cyber harassment and bullying, I thought that that things were just uncalled for. I would hope that, I mean, just as we're talking about the harm reduction program, it is easy to have a civil conversation even while while questioning some logistical matters, right? I was, I was very disappointed with the way that that went down, but I'm happy that we were able to pivot and that we were able to to find a new location to ensure that we we don't have anyone freezing this winter. I'm a firm believer that people can change. It is why I chose to support the harm reduction program tonight. And it is why I think it's uncalled for, to personally attack someone for their their past when they have worked very hard to overcome that. So not to get on too much of a soapbox, but I was, I was very disappointed with the way that went down. Other than that, I just want to again remind everyone that it is Small Business Saturday. We have a lot of fun stuff planned downtown, from specials at the local shops, to a vintage market, to the Moonlight Market in the afternoon and evening. There's food trucks, there's entertainment, free parking. So make sure to come downtown on Saturday, and I'll see you there.
All right. And Mayor, you don't. The mayor is glad to witness the two new police officers taking their oath today, in addition to spending last week in Atlanta at the National League of Cities meetings and bringing back lots of ideas. It is also exciting to see our city moving forward, large and small, with the new pool complex, the new skid steer, lighting at the Met Theater, moving the roadway to further the Richwood Project, as well as the council's strategic plan. And loved the West Virginia, oh, I'm sorry. Loved that the West Virginia Forest provided the National Christmas tree coming through town, which I saw your pictures in social media. Better than a Hallmark movie, is what I heard. It was very reminiscent of. People loved making ornaments together. Thanks to all those that organized it, and those participants really enjoyed signing the side of the trailer. Mine, he signed twice.
Connor did two. He wanted two pens.
Yeah, okay.
He broke the first one.
Oh. Well.
I don't, I don't have anything today. I just want to tell everybody, have a nice Thanksgiving and enjoy yourself.
Very good.
Councilor Kowicki?
A couple of things. This strategic planning that we have coming up, based on what we had seen in the past and the progress that we made, I'm hopeful that we can continue that and even broaden some of the aspirations that that was able to institute. So I'm looking forward to it, and I hope that we will all, you know, actually take it very much to heart and 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 work to see if we can establish something that will continue the forward progress that we've been making. A couple other things. I want to thank our our city clerk for the linking of our packet. It certainly helps to get through it, once having read it, to go back and find the specific navigating through it with the the linking that you've done in the PDF has made it much easier. So I do appreciate that. And then I have a complaint, not a new one, but one that just reared its ugly head again this morning. We all know it rained last night, and in my area, there was garbage collection. And lo and behold, when they collected the garbage, and also did not collect my recycling, they left both lids open. So I went out to find my garbage and my newspaper recycling and all the rest of that soaking wet. I don't think it's terrible to ask, or difficult to ask, that whoever is emptying the garbage, if they can flip it open, they can flip it shut. And certainly when it's raining, at least. Other than that, that's my continued complaint. I wish that it was communicated to the appropriate sources. Other than that, happy Thanksgiving. I hope everybody has a good family gathering and plenty to eat.
And then for my report, we had, I know there was a successful event downtown. It's still very whimsical out there, branches aside for Small Business Saturday. Speaking of downtown and it being whimsical, there's a lot of Christmas trees, and the Tree Board has our meeting on Monday. Anybody from Hangout hear about trees? The following Monday is our Neighborhood, so December 4th, the following Monday is our First Ward Neighborhood Meeting at MTEC at 6 o'clock. It is the first Monday of December this coming month, just because I believe the fourth Monday is Christmas. I want to say Christmas Eve. But we'll be at MTEC, and a few of us have started working on our neighborhood sign. So we're a little jealous and a little behind, but we'll catch up.
Trump Park just got theirs, too. My ward is two for two.
Well, we're gonna, we got the perfect spot, just wait. And yeah, I would also like to reiterate thanks to everybody for the event I was put on downtown. I heard a lot of really great things about it. And I'm also excited today. I got a phone call from Senator Manchin's office. They're going to give the wrestling team, we're going to be in DC for a match, and they're going to give us a private tour of Capitol Hill next Friday, which is really exciting for them. The kids are real excited. And that is my entire report. And with that said, I have.
Move to adjourn?
Second. All right, 9:43. Bye, Brian. All right, 9:43. Hi, Brian.
We're done. We don't have a second.
Dave, or no, Danielle motioned.
Yeah, I seconded. She motioned this.